All right, it's eight thirty A M. We will begin this work session of Lake County Board of County Commissioners. On the agenda today, we have two presentations, one from Lake County Conservation and one from, I'm drawing a blank on the second one. Chamber of Commerce, great, oh yeah. Who was first? Chamber, okay.
I have some notes I'm gonna with here. Ready? Wait, not me? Good morning.
Good morning.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Nancy Bailey, interim president here at the Lake County Chamber of Commerce. And with me on this Zoom, we have Norm Ryder. Norm, can you hear us?
Yes, loud and clear.
Okay. Norm and I are gonna kind of present together and we will make this brief and because we know you guys have a lot on the agenda today, so we just want to say good morning and thank you for the opportunity to have us here today. Just as a little recap, the Chamber is a hundred and twelve year old organization, one of the oldest nonprofit institutions here. And as most of you know, after a five year pause or more, late in twenty twenty four, we convened a group to recreate or reimagine a Chamber of Commerce for Lake County. And so I'm so sorry to interrupt you, but while you're while you're running it, can you please admit folks in this room? Yeah, sorry, you'll have to do that.
You have to multitask.
I got you. Thank you. So we'll kind of go through this as a guide. But more importantly, this is also we're open for any questions or feedback. Our mission really is simple and it's really to ensure that every business from Harrison Avenue to Twin Lakes has support, stability and a seat at the table. So for the last year, we've built a solid foundation that businesses can rely on again. So, yeah. Norm's gonna go through a little bit and introduce himself, but we did want to, and he'll go through some of our you know, accomplishments over this last year. So Norm, why don't you go ahead?
Hey, hey, thank Nancy. Thank you, Nancy, and thank you for the invitation to be part of this meeting. My name's Norm Ryder. I'm a Chamber Board member and local business owner. As, as Nancy mentioned, in the past year, we've really rebuilt the foundation for a functioning chamber, a chamber that's now ready to start thriving. We have a functional network of local business owners, so they're the employers in the county with the Chamber and to the local government. So our board now represents a combination of local retail businesses, trades, hospitality, the creative fields, tech and health services. So we've grown over fifty active members in the first year, really showing that the businesses want our Chamber to be back and to be strong. So these businesses, once again, employ our neighbors, keep our storefronts open, support local revenue. And so, once again, we feel organized, we're stable and we're actively engaged. Back to you, Nancy.
Thank you very much. We'll go through this a little bit, but a couple of keynotes through this last year that really kind of, you know, continues to inform us that the business community really does want a chamber. And we've built that connection through our leads groups, which are monthly ways for members to stay connected and talk about real time issues and a peer-to-peer support network. Business after hours quarterly has also been instituted here. And the gatherings really foster that mentorship and that connectivity and collaboration that sometimes business owners don't get to do because we're very busy running our own businesses. We have, you know, started from the ground up. Most of you know that, so if you didn't, we, we didn't, you know, there was the good news and the bad news. We appreciated the opportunity to create a reimagined Chamber of Commerce more focused on business advocacy and being a real trusted partner with our municipalities. It's very critical that that happens as we move on to, move into, you know, what a future organization would look like. And we're now visible and most of you can see us in social media and others and it is just a start. We have exciting plans for twenty twenty six. But with that, I'm gonna let Norm share a little bit about the advocacy side. So Norm, why don't you take it away?
Hey, yeah, thank Nancy. Yeah, so as Nancy mentioned, we've been really bootstrapping this organization so far. All the board members are all volunteer, as is Nancy, who fills the role as president and her own CEO. On advocacy side, we've really been able to show up and we're doing this consistently at city council meetings, at these meetings with you, at the county. And we participate on One Community Project Task Force. So our focus is to really gather and share business input with you and others early, constructively, not after decisions are made, but to really help inform your decisions. And we see that as a big role that we can provide, a service we can provide to you. So we've seen real improvements in how we communicate and coordinate, certainly worked out some kinks in terms of how that's concerned and help inform some policy decisions for small businesses. We anticipate that role increasing over this next year. For us, the economic development side, it's not abstract, it's very practical. We're here to support businesses that can stay open, they can retain their staff and employees and grow. So Nancy, your deal?
Any questions so far for us? Okay, great. Moving right along. We did want to share, you know, economic development is really about people and jobs. And sometimes we get lost in plans and programs. So we want to, you know, continue elevating that really important element of the backbone of our community. And that is the health of our job base and the, you know, positive trajectory of what kind of job growth could look like going forward. So, you know, when a business closes, it's, you know, it's not, it's a loss of stability in a lot of ways. And, you know, jobs keep families housed and, oops, sorry. And keep kids in school and keep dollars circulating locally. So the Chamber really, you know, will focus the next several years at really elevating our, you know, what that looks like in our community. So, let's see. I'm going to, I'm not, I'm multitasking here. We would love to talk about different ways that, you know, we could work together in the future. And, and I'm gonna let Norm kind of touch on this a little bit. Norm, why don't you take it away?
Yeah, so we do see a partnership with the county as essential for what we do. We are a countywide organization. So we, we bring in businesses across the county, including Twin Lakes and Leadville. You know, we believe we have the, an opportunity to align our efforts through shared outreach, through our ability to connect with businesses at a different level, as Nancy mentioned, through our monthly topics at our lead session, which are small group sessions with local business owners, tour business after hours, through other communication mechanisms. We also meet with businesses one-on-one and we review topics like visitor journeys through the county and how we can make, help them, you know, have more stickier kind of content for the visitors to, to buy from them. Or if they're not in the services side, to help them kind of thrive in a different way. So, you know, we're finding that the businesses need clarity and consistency, especially around seasonality, as you're very familiar with, to make sure the workforce and the costs are understood, along with their anticipated revenue based on the seasonality of our visitor community. Or do you, Nancy?
Thanks. We have, I kind of flip-flop this, but we did want to share, we won't get into a lot of detail. You guys can reference back our report, but there are other Colorado communities that show what's possible with some modest chamber support. You know, there's Salida examples, Salida, Gunnison, Route County in here that kind of, you know, gives you an idea of different ways that our local counties are supporting their chambers and overall economic development. And, you know, just know these successes didn't happen by accident. They happened because chambers were resourced as partners. So that's something that, that we definitely want to grow into as we, you know, as we continue our, our journey here. Norm, why don't you take it away on the next, next slide?
Okay, great. Yeah, so as Nancy mentioned, you know, we've seen investment in chambers in counties all around Lake County. We're requesting a twenty-five thousand dollar investment, partnership investment from the county for our Chamber that will support not only our operations, but expanding and making sure we focus on topics that are very relevant to you as decision makers, so we can help feed you information you know, ahead of your decisions and, you know, really to double down and support One Community Project outcomes. And the strategies that the Chamber knows that we're well suited to pick up and move forward. So this twenty-five K investment, it provides us year-round stability, allows us to have to create our own jobs within the Chamber so that we can have the staff to support these initiatives, to stay coordinated and do the basic functions that we need to run our operations. So it's not all about operations, we really want to focus on the outcomes that we can provide you. And that's where, with that investment, we'll make sure that we are well-connected with you, we get your guidance and then we get the feedback that you guys need to make your decisions. And once again, our, our big focus is a healthy business network, so we can, businesses can collaborate, so they can stay open, keep jobs local and even grow new jobs within the county. Nancy, back to you.
Thank you. All right, time check, eight forty-two, we're right, going right along. We, it's a really exciting time, I think, for our community with the groups all working together and the business community having a voice and a new county commissioners and amazing county manager. We finally have all the ingredients really to build a resilient economy. And it really starts with stabilizing our existing business community, the existing employers that are providing the jobs today so that we can grow jobs in the future. That really is the baseline. And, you know, we don't have to say it, when they stay open, you know, there's greater revenue and there's more investment going in amongst the community. And let's see, what else did I want to share on this? And I'm gonna turn it back to Norm, he's gonna close us out. But, you know, a couple of things, we, we're not asking for a handout. This is an investment request to get the Chamber out of capacity in which we can be that trusted resource because we all know there, there are reasons why there are nonprofit chambers and EDCs in communities because we do the things that you guys can't and because you guys are focused on lots of other things. So, you know, leaning in on your trusted business organization partners are, is what we're aiming for. We know we have a long way to go and we are, you know, continuing every day to walk that walk and, you know, thousands of volunteer hours have gone into getting it this far. But we can't, we, you know, there's only so much we're gonna be able to do before we, you know, we need some, some guidance and investment from our municipalities. We have requested the same ask for the city of Leadville, just to be transparent. And we feel like this would give us a foundation enough to pay a part-time director with some acumen and continue with additional programming on top of what we're already doing. And we have, you know, already plans and, and things in place to talk about that if, if we move into the next step on that. Let's see, I'm gonna hand it back over to you, Norm.
Okay, great. Thanks, Nancy. Yeah. Yeah, so we're, we consider ourselves a very active partner with you and that's how we like to show up. We are very focused on job creation and retention and helping to make Lake County's business community and our economy strong. So with that, we just open it up to any questions you have for us.
What conversations have you all had with Adam Ducharme, our TED Director? About this, because it's, we specifically have a department that, that works on economic development.
We are, we are actively in conversations with Adam. I haven't presented this report to him because these are just typically our county or city organizational update reports. But I'm certain, and I have shared those in the past with Adam, so, yeah.
Yeah, we, I just add to that, we work closely with Adam on really leveraging the visitor use data that he, or the visitor impact data that he collects or he has access to. Adam participates in our monthly board meetings as one of our partners. And then, of course, through the Elevate Leadville-Twin Lakes, we're working with him as one of the partner organizations there. So we feel like we are in step with visitor tourism and, and the tourism economy part of, of what he's doing there, too.
Okay, I'm, I'm only asking because he's not just tourism, he's also economic development. And just two weeks ago, we started having conversations about how our community asks are really wonderful and to have some of those asks go through departments as opposed to this bucket of, of extra funds or community funds, like we have directors, professionals working in these areas of economic development, not yet natural resources, recreation, et cetera. So this is, I'm not expecting you all to have had this conversation. I'm only bringing it up because I personally would like to see some of these things go through our county staff as opposed to like one-off investment requests. So I was just curious what kind of conversations you all had had in terms of the county investing through our economic development department. That's all.
So, really great questions. I will say, I'll answer it this way. We're more importantly here to provide you our organizational update after a year of relaunching our Chamber. That is first and foremost why we're here. I don't, if we need to go through Adam to be able to do that going forward, we're happy to follow any protocol. We just wanted to be consistent with what we've done already with you guys. In terms of this request, it's the first time, I think, I don't, I've done some research, it's been decades since municipal, local municipalities have invested in the Chamber. So we felt like it was appropriate, this first, you know, time to kind of have this conversation in front of y'all. And then going forward, and we're happy to, you know, work through Adam's department, but we just felt like it was appropriate for us to be here to hear from us. Norm, do you have something to add?
Yeah, we can, and we can follow up with Adam. We'll follow up with Adam on the specific requests and kind of read him into more details about what we can do with that funding on the funding request side.
Yeah, that was not meant to be a criticism. It was just a curiosity because this is our first time doing this process. And obviously, we have a lot to learn and grow in seeing as how you all are in here now. Yeah, just curious, since we have folks working on that, I don't want disparate conversations, I want collaborated efforts.
Yeah.
Thank you.
I'm gonna shoot you guys some emails with some questions about what your bigger funding picture looks like so that we can make a better decision on what we're able to help out with. I realize this is an important component in the local community and it does need support. And then the other part would, a little more detailed, but trying to figure out what you guys are able to to do to help local businesses with permitting processes if they're spinning their wheels or getting lost in the process or somewhere. If that's something you guys are able to help with, I do see it vaguely described in the presentation, but I'd like to ask more about that. But I'm gonna do that via email at a later date because for time's sake.
Yes.
So I appreciate you guys coming in. Thank you so, oh, I'm sorry if you had any questions.
No, I agree with what both you guys said. I would like to see a bigger financial picture, how much what your overall budget is and then specifically what you do with, with our donation.
Yes.
Mostly for a director? Would that be a part-time position?
It would, it, it's, we already have those written and ready. We just, this was phase one and if you guys were interested, we can share what those, what that kind of picture looks like. It's, it's not all for staff. It is, it's a lot into programming and creating. And again, I, I don't, I don't want to speak of specifics yet because we haven't had board approval on some, on some of the things that, that are in there, but they are allocated to certain and specific programming in addition to staff. And we do have a part-time contractor that is helping get us to this level here. And half of her time is donated by her, just as a, you know, courtesy until we can, you know, increase our membership base and, you know, and I do want to, yeah, I want to mention that, you know, membership growth is our goal is an organic growth strategy. So that's our, that's our plan.
Great.
Well, thank you very much for your time. We really appreciate it.
Yeah, same.
Yeah, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Norm.
Thanks.
All right. Lake County Conservation District, hello, Harmony.
I have to tell it, we're gonna do this in fifteen minutes.
It is, you'll get your fifteen minutes, I promise. And we, if we gotta start our next one a little late, that's okay.
I have a presentation, preparing slides. I did that in May. And I'm here just to kind of reconnect with you about really what I think is the most important part for the county of what the Lake County Conservation District does. So the Lake County Conservation District was founded in nineteen fifty by landowner referendum. They are special taxing district, just like a water district, hospital district, school district. The caveat there is that we do not levy any property taxes whatsoever. So our income is only eight thousand dollars a year by direct assistance through the state, through the Department of Agriculture. In twenty twenty-two, the Community Wildfire Protection Plan was written for the, for the county. It was a years-long process. The county was in close partnership with all of the, you know, forestry and emergency organizations. And also, one of them was the Central Colorado Conservancy, which is a land trust out of Salida that covers Lake County as well. In the absence of a Water Resources Department and a Natural Resources Department, the county government in Central Colorado Conservancy decided to partner on building capacity for the Conservation District, which at the time did not have any kind of full-time staff. It was all volunteer-based, meetings were being had in private living rooms. And as a unit of state government, you have to face transparency laws, you have to have everything open to the public, notice twenty-four hours in advance, budgets, whatnot. So they decided to build capacity for the Conservation District. The Central Colorado Conservancy received a five-year contract from the NRCS at fifty thousand dollars a year to support a full-time position. The county supported it with twenty-five grand a year. With, I started in this position in twenty twenty-three and within six months' time, NRCS pulled the plug on that contract due to administrative reasons, not based, not because of my performance. I even had the local rep, the local NRCS rep vouch for me and write this beautiful letter about how I've increased landowner participation by seven hundred percent, why yada, yada, yada. Funding cuts, as you all know, are really hard right now. Federal, the federal administration is cutting its priorities, shifting its priorities to different things. I've lost a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in project funding this year alone. The biggest one was the EPA. It was free soil testing for landowners that we test for heavy melt, contaminants in soil. So I put in your packet three things. I gave you some twenty twenty-four data and some twenty to twenty-five data, just in the types of work that we do. The grant funding, I have secured for private landowners, not for myself, but for private landowners. And then the number two in your packet is the Lake County Forest Health Council. When I started this position, I was graciously voluntold by a commissioner that I am now facilitating convening that group. And I do that every two months. I track and help execute and find partnership, two partnerships to help find places where we can implement forest health and fuel reduction projects in our county. We were trying to mimic what was happening down in Shaky County. They were a few years ahead of us. And we have really gained traction in twenty twenty-four. I do not have twenty twenty-five data yet assembled, but I do have twenty-four, twenty, twenty twenty-four data is one point three million dollars on private land alone. That does not include the work that is done on public land. It's great, it's a great way to leverage outsourced state and federal funding. And I've been keeping this, this, this work going. We are now moving on to various different, different places to protect the to protect the lands and the water that we love here so much in Colorado and in Lake County specifically. Number three, I work closely with Anne Schneider and her team. They send me, they send the Conservation District requests for comments when they have subdivision applications or conditional use permit applications. We also get requests from the Colorado Division of Mining Reclamation and Safety. When, like with the Titan AU goal to submit comments on those, everything is, everything is focused on natural resources. So think soil health, noxious weed management, forest health, forest fuel reduction, watershed health, whatnot. We've submitted comments for those. And finally, on the second page, I wanted to just tie into the Natural Resources and Environment Action Team that the Community One Project is working on right now. I've been participating in those. And I see the Conservation District be a leader in both Goal Two and Goal Four, which are prioritize environmental resilience and local decision-making and model environmentally conscious practices across government operations and programs. And Goal Four is enhance forest health while building community resilience to wildfire. Overall, I think in the few years that I've been working in this position, the Conservation District has really positioned itself as a leader in natural resources. We've been participating in all sorts of watershed health, forest, forest health projects, noxious weed management. We've also dabbled in urban agricultural and some food access work. And we are here just to kindly request your continued support for this position. And I would just like to answer any questions you may have. I do want to add one more thing. When I asked to write the one-pager for you, you asked me which priority, which, which priority, of which board priority my work addresses. And I wrote down environmental and natural resources. And then later that same evening, I had my board meeting here and I looked up at this board and I noticed that that was not one of your priorities. However, I can see how it, it ties. It's tied to the Airport Industrial Park. We are doing fuel mitigation in Idle Gulch to make sure that that whole area is resilient to wildfire because it's in a high priority fuel area. And any outdoor recreation ties into this beautifully. So I have just a few more minutes and I'll go for any questions. Or you can, of course, send your questions.
So your request is twenty-five thousand?
My request is twenty-five.
Twenty thousand?
Yes.
What's your overall budget? And how do you get paid?
I get paid mostly through grant funding. So like I said in the beginning, it was a capacity building position through NRCS in the county to have a full-time FTE. And I was told during my interview that I would have to write grants to support myself. And so at this point, when I write grants, I write in time for myself. A lot of these, a lot of the projects that I work on, when I connect a landowner with funding, it's directly with, I directly connect them and I do not gain access to any of those funds. So the services I provide for landowners often just out the door, I provide those technical assistance and that education part for free. But when I do my own projects, I get a seed cost share, as you know. I'm working on an infostream project for the Lake Fork Creek right now. I work in my hourly time into that, so I can find, came through those project grants. But those are highly competitive at this point.
Yeah.
Because they're going away.
So where would our twenty thousand dollar contribution go without this?
It would go to my time, yes. Organizational capacity for the work I perform, Forest Health Council work, keeping the organization in compliance with state and, and federal regulations.
Harmony, I know we've benefited from your time that has not been funded as well. So I, I just want to say, even since getting here, I really appreciate all the support you've offered us, even without funding. So I, I see your value every day.
Thank you. And the question you asked Nancy about working with, I've, I've worked with Anne Schneider and her team and Bryce, and I've had county commissioners attend Forest Health Council meetings on a regular basis.
Yeah.
I've also had the Hartz III Rec and Open Space Director attend my board meetings as well.
Yeah. Yeah, and you show up in all the right places and that's not funded time, I can tell.
That's right.
Yeah.
That's part of the organizational capacity part.
Absolutely.
Yes, so.
I have no question. I have no question.
I have no questions for right here, but I do have some more random things that I will reach out to you directly about.
Please.
On a future date here, hopefully real soon. Anything from you, Commissioner?
Nope, I'm all set, thank you.
All right. Thank you for your time, Harmony.
Yes, thank you so much.
We appreciate you guys and everything you do.
I know that this is a squeaking in and I appreciate that.
Oh, yeah, absolutely, plenty of time.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Thank you. Merry for coming.
I didn't introduce her very soon, she's our, she's our board president.
I know Mary. I know Mary.
I just want you guys to know that without, I mean, we would not have, yeah. She's wonderful.
Thank you.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you for you guys.
Is moving right into it. All right.
Nice meeting.